Thank you for joining us. My name is Nancy Furness and this is We've Got Issues. We've Got Issues is a nonpartisan, citizens-based forum where we look at topics of interest to the Tri-Cities. And we would like to thank Tri-Cities Community Television for making these interviews possible. I'd also like to acknowledge that our interviews are taking place on the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of Kwek Witu First Nations. And we thank the Kwek Witu people who continue to live on these lands and to care for the lands and the waters and all that lies above and below. So this afternoon, we're joined by Jamie Watson, who is taking a run for Port Kwek Witu City Council. So it's a pleasure to have you here, Jackie. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
I was wondering if maybe for people who maybe don't know you, if you could give us a little bit of a background about who you are and why you decided to run for Port Kwek Witu City Council?
Well, I'm originally from Ontario and I was diagnosed with a hearing disability as a small child. And so in order to teach me to speak and mainstream me into public school, we had to move to B.C., because at that time was the only school district that was mainstreaming hard-of-hearing children. So that was almost four years ago. We ended up out here. So that's been an interesting journey, being a hard-of-hearing child and what accessibility means. And so the years continued to live in Tri-Cities and got involved in the community through actually the school garden, Lakeburn School Garden.
Oh, a school garden, okay.
Yeah, so that's actually where it all began, was a habitat garden that we had at Lakeburn, a bee-bird butterfly garden. And so that's what started everything in the process and giving back to the community. And it was actually an interesting story. It was a woman who had cancer, who would lay in the garden every day to try and heal.
So just some therapy.
Therapy, right? And that had such an impact on me, realizing that we needed to create more spaces for the public. And it was such a joy to see nothing to eight hummingbirds. And also it was interesting, the impact it had on the kids at the school to have a space for the teachers to teach and be outside. So that's really where I started getting involved and...
It sounds like a really nice beginning, because there's so many positives that have come out of that already. Now, you took a run last term, I believe, for City Council. A lot of things have changed since then and now. Can you tell us for you, running, what's changed? What changes have you seen in Port Kwek Witu?
Well, it's interesting. For the first time I ran was actually, was I didn't have a very good time. People were very aggressive, believe it or not. I had a lot of harassment and so a lot of resistance.
And from who? Like, where was this resistance?
From men. And yeah, there's a lot of terrible incidences that took place. Actually, it was not a good time.
It's disappointing to hear that.
Yeah, it was. It's like, what time do we live in, really? So this time, it's been completely different.
Really?
Yeah.
Why do you think that is?
Well, I'm working with a younger generation now.
Okay.
You know, and the pandemic, what it did to the people around me, it changed us, right? Because we, I work for Costco, right? I've been there for 24 years. We were frontline workers during the pandemic. It changed all of us and what it means to work as a team, what it means to collaborate, and what it means to embrace new ideas in a situation such as that, as an emergency.
People are stressed?
People are stressed and it really made a lot of us closer. And so the reaction people are having now is completely different from the first time. So it's been great, actually.
That's really good to hear. I wasn't expecting to hear that.
No, I know.
But yeah, no, that's great. And can you tell me, what will you bring to City Council? Like, it's important to have diversity, as we know, on City Council. How will you contribute to the diversity on City Council? What do you bring that's not already there?
Well, first of all, my hearing loss, living with a disability. There's so much that people don't understand what it means to have a disability. And there's just not enough of disabled voices in politics. And so I feel that our unique perspective and outlook on things could bring an interesting element to the table.
Right. I think, I think you're right. There's a voice there that's missing. And it's not just for the hard-of-hearing. It's for a much broader spectrum of people out there that you could potentially be speaking for.
And I do feel people with disabilities come to me and they talk to me about it, because there's a common ground there, right?
They feel safe and comfortable.
Yeah. So you know, whether the sidewalks are not safe, right? Whether there's a lack of social, you know? So having that, I feel, will make a whole part of our community feel comfortable in talking to someone who can relate.
And possibly some voices that we're not hearing at the community.
And show that to the younger generation that this is possible.
Right, right.
And yeah, just to be the face and the voice, you know, that we can do it.
Now, you have been engaged in the community. You've told us about some things that you've done and you've been very active, taken an active role in a few different things. And we'll cover some more as we go along. You were part of the Mayor's Roundtable, and I believe you're not on it now. But I was wondering if you could maybe share some of that experience with us? What does the Mayor's Roundtable do?
Well, it was, it was interesting. It was a diverse group of people from all kinds of backgrounds, just sharing their input on what diversity, inclusion, equality means. And everybody putting forth ideas. I struggled with it and unfortunately, at that time, it was during Zoom.
Okay, that is a challenge of its own, I guess, yes.
Yes. And so unfortunately, with Zoom, I can't quite, the caption isn't fast or if you don't speak properly or you're not clear, Zoom doesn't work properly. So I was very isolated in that sense that I couldn't communicate or understand what was going on. So at one point, they were fantastic about it and they're very understanding. And then they would let me go into a boardroom, this is even during everything that was going on, and watch from a big screen. But at that point, I was already so lost. I was already so behind.
It's a challenge for sure. And I think, you know, even at the best of times, communicating via Zoom was not ideal for a lot of people. But to have those extra challenges on top of that?
And I don't look at it in a negative way. It's sort of, you know, it's kind of funny in a sense, you know, being a hard-of-hearing person and you can't participate on the equality, diversity, inclusion.
Well, it's ironic.
It is ironic, right? So I do make light of it. And you know, and I understand that as time goes on, we will be able to all be together and have meetings in person.
So for that roundtable, what sorts of things did you accomplish and what came out of it?
The only thing I accomplished was my ideas in the beginning. I had three ideas that I was very passionate about. But I never really got a chance to talk about them. I never, it's pretty well the ideas that got me on the committee to begin with, because you had to apply for it, right? So I never got to explore those ideas or talk about those ideas, which is something that I'm hoping to do if I get on Council.
Can you tell us just very briefly what those three ideas were?
Sure, absolutely. Very briefly. I'm very passionate about film and I would love to see the youth be engaged in a film festival. That's very block theater. And it'd be one of those film festivals where it's shorts. And there could be interesting topics and, you know, accessibility could be the topic of the year. Inclusion could be. And the kids have a competition every year on what's the important, you know, conversation of the year. So that was one. Another one was Culture Day. I do passionately love all other cultures, music, foods, and arts. Not everybody can travel. So it'd be amazing to shut down the streets of Poco and have different cultures represent themselves and have a passport for kids. And the kids go to each culture and get a passport and there's a prize at the end. But that way, because racism is prevalent and...
Well, and I think it's a way to learn about different cultures in a very positive light. And I think once you learn about them, you become more open and...
Absolutely. You know, and so, and there's such beauty in each one. And so, and through art and food and music, you know, it's, to me, a different way to combat racism.
Kind of a way to reach out to people that, everybody eats and everybody, you know, likes to have fun.
It brings the kids, you know? Yeah, so that was a big one for me.
So those are the three things that you...
There was a two. There's a third. I can't remember off the top of my head. But those were the two that I were really focused on.
So you've got the Film Festival, the Culture Day, and then one other one that you're gonna keep secret from us for a little while. We'll have to wait.
I'd have to look at my notes.
Okay, we'll wait. One thing that you've been, I think you're one of the very few people speaking out about the importance of this, is food security. When we talk about food security at a local level, what are you talking about? What would you like to see?
Well, you have those 580-something acres here in Poco. And over the years, I've heard farmers are struggling and, you know, there's the poor soil. Those are support. I mean, they're right by the river. So they need us to help them, right? And we need them.
We do.
Right? It's a no-brainer. So there's such potential in, in local food, but also agritourism. Have you ever been?
I'm interested.
Yeah, krause farms, like all that.
Yes, the berry farm and...
Yeah, so they are busting by the seams with businesses.
Or the pumpkin patch.
Yeah, so there's just, there's just so much out there that we can learn from to help the local farmers. And there's a ton of grants out there. Like, I just, I want to be a voice, a person that can listen to them and help them, whatever way, and just move Poco where it needs to be and protect those 580 acres that we have left. Metro Vancouver actually slotted those specifically for farmland.
Oh, okay.
They've actually been labelled. So to get them out of farm would be very difficult.
Out of the agricultural land reserve? Are we seeing an erosion of them? Or are they pretty, like, is it, it's difficult to take them out of the ALR?
It is. And it was the recent Metro Vancouver 2052 Plan that they talked about, that is pretty well set for that. So it's very, the process is very difficult.
Right, but it's how we support them.
I know it's a battle between real developers and farmers. So I'm no stranger to the battle, so I'm absolutely...
Not gonna shy away from that?
Nope, not at all, no.
So what can you do as a city councillor? You had talked about there's grants to apply for and things like that. How can you support our farmers, our local farmers, as a city councillor or from a municipal level?
Well, you go to the feds, you go to Metro Vancouver.
So you're talking about reaching out to partners?
Yes.
Or reaching out to different levels?
Yes, so you have roundtables, you have town halls. I think if we can get the community to support it, right? Support them and, and then reach out to all different levels of government, so...
Right. So it sounds like you're supportive of town halls and public engagement?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. No question.
Do you think there's enough public engagement, enough sort of bringing people in and public consultation right now?
Well, if you want to touch on the reconciliation work, then I'd add, they were supposed to, there was, it's supposed to be a town hall with my work.
Can you tell us, just give us a little bit of a background on what that work was?
So I pursued reconciliation for the women who died on the Pechon property. It was a long process. We started at the Lakeburn Lagoon, then we went over to the property.
And is this with the city?
With the city, with the province, with, with families, with, it was, I had a committee at the time. So we just reached out to, I mean, any MLA that would listen to us. We were talking with the Parks Departments, we were talking with the mayor. How are we gonna get this done? And so throughout the whole process, it was all, this is a problem. So we would go to a different person and come up with a different solution. So went from the lagoon, back to the property, then back over to the lagoon. Then we got the grants for the lagoon and that all felt... Well, that was, the Parks Department were supportive of the lagoon at the time, right? There was nothing there at that time.
Parks Department of Port Kwek Witu?
Port Kwek Witu, yes. There were many meetings on where could we find a spot for a garden for the women. That's how it all began. Because of that woman in the school garden with cancer and how much it healed her, I thought, well, the women who died, I thought the most appropriate way would to be given them a healing garden.
A healing garden is a wonderful idea, yes.
That's how it started. I just wanted a garden for the women. And so some of the family members I spoke to were quite positive about it. Some weren't. It was a contentious subject.
Right.
So the very end, the province, the feds, and the city applied for the grants for the lagoon. It went through. We spoke with landscape architects to have my bench for the women. And in the end, they had a town hall. Well, it wasn't a town hall.
Oh, so there never was a town hall?
No. It was the, you come in and see the plans of the lagoon.
Oh, all right, so it wasn't...
I had a speech plan. I wanted to engage with the community, tell them what it is that I wanted to do.
So it's more of an info session?
It was an info session. I remember walking into the gym at Lakeburn and being stunned.
Okay, so they caught you off guard.
Oh, they did. Yeah, absolutely. So it was an info session. It wasn't a town hall.
Right.
And so I've been to town halls in the past. We've had them, right? So that was a bit of a shock. And so then they had the votes, whether, they actually held a survey with the city, with everybody in the community, whether this was supposed to be a reconciliation bench. The favour was for a reconciliation bench. And then they had an in-camera meeting to decide whether it was going to be, and they voted against it. The bench is there. The landscape architect and I sat down and discussed what it was gonna look like. But they voted against it, so...
You've just brought a couple of other issues up. First of all, I want to say, you know, thank you for doing your work that you've done there. And I ran into you just a couple of weeks ago at an Indigenous-led reconciliation event. So right now, there is a cedar heart that has been placed in Lakeburn Lagoons behind the bench that you worked so hard to get. So it's still happening, but just not the way that you thought. We're not quite there yet.
Yes.
The issue that I want to kind of move on to a little bit now is, you were saying that the decision was made about the future of this bench behind, in a closed meeting, in an in-camera meeting. Do you feel that there's too much going on behind closed doors? Like, do we...
I don't agree with in-camera meetings. It's, they are working for us, the community. We elect them. We should know what's going on. Because in the next election, we need to know where they stand. So now, I don't know in that in-camera meeting, who stands for reconciliation and who doesn't.
And I think there are certain times, very specific reasons why something would go into closed if there's personal information. But there are parameters around that. So as a city councillor, would you be encouraging sort of more compliance with going, or, we don't know if it's compliant or not, because we don't know what's happening. Would you encourage compliance with the community charter? That things go into closed only when they reach those parameters that are laid out in the community charter?
That's something I would have to look into. I would just be speaking out against in-camera meetings in general. Whether, I don't have enough information of why they're there. That's the other key. Why do they even have them? What's, right, so what's the process, you know? And, and so that's the thing about a problem, is I have the ability to look at all sides and figure out, okay, so why is this working and why isn't? And that's how I would tackle it. So when is it necessary and when isn't it? To me, whether a bench is approved, reconciliation.
Like, why would that be?
Why would that be in camera?
So I think there are specific reasons why. So you could go and look at those parameters and say, this does or doesn't meet the standards, so...
I need to learn more about that, right? And that's one of the things I'm interested in.
But something to be aware of, I think, for sure.
Absolutely, yeah.
Now, can you tell me, like, we're talking a little bit about public information and public engagement. Whose voices are missing at the table? You said somewhere in your platform that there are community groups that should be at the table and that should be represented, and they're not. Can you give some examples of what you're talking or referring to?
Well, I think lower-income families, right? Single moms. There are a lot of people that I come across in my job that have zero interest in politics. Because it's a world that they don't belong in. It's a world that's no voice of theirs in. And there's no empathy they feel in their situation. There are a lot of very jaded people when it comes to politics. And I come across that in my work environment. You know, and you only have a 28% voter turnout? That tells you a lot of who isn't there.
So why? Why are people so jaded and distressful?
Well, think about it. You've got the banners, you've got the suits, you've got the glitz and the glam, right? And you've got people who are out of touch with what's really going on. I just heard a story the other day of a family that has a one-bedroom apartment where the two girls live in the bedroom and the parents live in the living room. That's a normal story I come across, right? So I don't think politics in general, there are a lot of people who are in politics that experience those kind of living conditions.
Well, you bring up a really good point. Like, as far as people on Council, they're well-established. They're not facing those barriers or those challenges necessarily. So to bring that empathy and, you know, maybe some lived experiences and a willingness to reach out and engage those people who aren't being heard, it's a super valuable role to be playing.
I've lived paycheck to paycheck as a single mom. You know, I understand what worrying about how food is gonna be paid for. High rent is just insane in this city. So yeah, I understand where they're coming from.
So what can we do as a municipality? As far as affordable housing, it's an issue everywhere right now. What role can the municipality play to kind of help ensure that everybody has a home?
Well, you know, there is that whole contention of low-income housing, right? We need, there are some beautiful rentals in the city. But no one can afford a $2,300 a month two-bedroom apartment.
It's a mortgage payment.
Sure. No, that's a rental.
I know, but I mean, you could be...
You know what I mean?
Yeah, it shouldn't be a rental.
They're beautiful, fantastic, but who can afford that, you know? So Kwek Witu recently has started a project on Burke Mountain where they're building a bunch of townhomes. And you have to apply for it. And you have to be within a certain income. And you can actually own your own home. That's the thing.
So you're renting to own? Is that what you're saying?
You apply to purchase a home in this townhouse complex on Burke Mountain.
And that's something you'd like to see brought to Kwek Witu?
Absolutely. Everybody deserves to not just have a roof where they had, but one that they call their own.
Well, it's a matter of dignity as well, and everybody deserves a home, right?
Absolutely. Then there's, then you care more about your community, you care about your space. You, you know, and it just, you're secure. I think security is everything.
I think you're right.
Not having your home taken away from you at a moment's notice because the landlord has decided to sell it at last minute to capitalize on the market. You know, so, or dealing with, you know? Yeah, so that's a big one, is being able to own your own home.
And that's a vision you would like to pursue?
Absolutely. So we would learn from Kwek Witu. What have they done? Like, what steps are they taking, right, to do that? Somebody being done. That's the exciting part, so...
Yeah, and look at what other communities are doing to grab with that and build on that and learn from that.
Absolutely.
Okay, I have another question. I'm sorry, I'm gonna pivot again because...
No, absolutely, yeah, it's great.
We have so much to cover, right? I want to talk a little bit about environment and climate change. Are we doing enough in Port Kwek Witu to deal with the effects of climate change?
Well, it's funny with climate change, I'm very passionate about renewable energy.
Oh, okay, that plays into the...
Yes. So I've read the climate change, the Port Kwek Witu. It looks great, you know? It looks wonderful. But when you get into it and are behind the scenes, is it really that wonderful? I don't know. So, but I'm really, so there's a lot of innovations out there that we don't have here, not having the Lower Mainland, that, here's an example, industrial parks that have solar panels on their roof and provide...
But why can't we have that here?
Well, that's what I want to find out. I want that, right? So in Surrey, they have a biofuel plant that takes organic waste and turns it into RNG. It's the biggest one in North America.
So, bring it home.
It's fantastic. So it powers 850 cars for an entire year. So it's not as sustainable as wind or solar. But it's a way to transition. So it's basically green waste being turned into fuel. It's a plant right beside the Surrey Transport Station.
So it's one more way that we have that we can move off...
60% less emissions than diesel or gas. And so they're using their trucks, their garbage trucks and their pickup trucks are using that.
So the city trucks are running off of this?
And so it was supported by the federal government and Metro Vancouver. They got $60 million to build it. And it's fantastic. I just stumbled upon that. See, that's the other thing with climate change. And I've noticed with the youth and everyone around me, there's such climate anxiety. And we need to change the narrative. We're talking so much about what we're not doing. We need to start talking about what we can do.
And what, yes.
We could be doing. And so, so like, you've never heard of Surrey Biofuel. Have you heard of that?
I've heard of it, but I didn't realize that they were running their trucks off of it. And I'm not that familiar with it, to be honest.
But there's so much going on out there that people aren't seeing or understanding. And I feel that if we talk more about the things that we are doing, anxiety about climate will drop significantly as opposed to everything we can't do.
Good point. I think you've mentioned Kwek Witu showing leadership in housing. You've talked about Surrey showing leadership in the biofuel plant. Where is Port Kwek Witu showing leadership?
I don't know. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Where would you like to see it?
I'm so busy looking at other cities. Sanich right now is giving people $12,000 to transfer their heat pumps from natural gas to electric. So like, I'm so busy looking at what we can be doing.
Right, preparing for the next chapter.
So one of the things I've learned at Costco is that the manager comes in, he's quiet for a while, he learns.
He's listening.
He sees, he listens, and then, then they start to implement things.
Right. Okay, so it sounds like you've been doing a lot of research?
I have, yeah.
So with respect to climate change, you're saying that we should focus on things that we can do and the positives? What are, besides what we've talked about with Surrey and renewable energy and looking into that, which is really an important component of it, what are some things that we can do as residents? Or what role can the city play in encouraging people to take action as well?
Having the Skytrain come would be a big one. Densification in Port Kwek Witu, walkability is a big one. Bike lanes is a big one, you know? It's about our lifestyle choices and our accessibility to fast transit. Those are the things that we can do. Choosing local, supporting local businesses.
Food security?
Food security, right? So, you know, the things like less waste. But it's not just about that. It's also what can bigger businesses do?
Yes, everybody has a role.
I feel like we put it so much on people. What are corporations and businesses doing? What can they do to be better, right? And I would like to explore that as well, you know? So are they giving away used food? Are they throwing stuff in the garbage that shouldn't be thrown away? What are they wasting? What can we do to support them?
So as far as doing things to support them, you mean having programs in place? Or maybe some kind of subsidy or something to encourage?
At Costco, we give away our bakery, you know, that share. I'm not sure who comes, but you know, we do donate to local charities. I'm just curious what everybody else is doing. So it's not just community members, but it's our businesses.
It's everybody.
It's everybody. It's a team thing.
Exactly. There's one other thing that I want to touch base on here. And I think you, it's kind of woven throughout some of the things you've said already. It's respectful workplace. So how will you ensure, if you're on Council, that it's an inclusive and safe space and that it's respectful and that everybody has the opportunity to be heard in a respectful way?
Well, coming from 24 years at Costco, I've learned so much about what it takes to work with a multitude of people. And the success that we have when we work together is so important to me. I do have that ability to talk to people and find out if they have an issue. Let's get to the bottom of it and how can we figure it out?
It's kind of working together.
How can we work through it? You know, you're useless by yourself. So I play soccer and I don't score goals at all if my team isn't helping me.
That's a good analogy.
It really is. And when they want me to do well, I do well. And I literally apply that in everything. I'm only as good as those around me.
Right. Now, there is some work being done, looking at possibly having some provincial oversight over the municipal level. So to have like an ethics commissioner or somebody who can come in, step in when things get really contentious and it doesn't look like they're going to be able to be solved around the council table, just to have that sort of cool-minded third party come in and help and provide some support. Is that something that you would be in favour of?
Absolutely. See, in my workplace, there's always that manager that's...